Thank you.
Do you swear that I will faithfully discharge?
For the best of my ability.
The duties incumbent upon me. As moderator of the schedule budgeting.
According to the Constitution and law.
Of this state. And I would support the Constitution.
And that of this state.
So long have thy shoulders been.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming out tonight, and thank you for the vote of support. I do need the municipal, the ballot clerks, one from each town, to come forward to be sworn in. You could do that at this time.
You want to read in unison?
Just raise your right hand. Print your name, print your name, and sign on that bottom. I'm going to recognize Jill for a motion.
I would like to make a motion to have permission to allow our non-resident administrators to speak. Katie Grandin, Kathy Martin, Samantha Garnett-Siasis, Marco Alaberty, Dustin Miles, Amy St Pierre, Norma Jean Audette, Nancy Dwyer, and Brian Daniels.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed, that motion carries. I recognize, all right, we're going to start with Article One. To see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for regular instruction. The school board recommends $7,354,743.61. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
So I'll just quickly go over the different articles so that people have an understanding of what is in this article. So Article One is regular instruction, which supports the classroom teaching and learning for approximately 1,300 students. This includes our salary and benefits for approximately 85 teachers, for educational technicians who are pre-K, GT, and our English, so our gifted and talented, and our English language learners. It also provides the supply and equipment related to the instruction. So regular instruction is what goes on in the classrooms. There are no new positions. There was a reduction of three elementary teacher positions, position one ed tech. Since the last budget approved, there's been additional reduction of an unfilled high school science position, and reduced an open unfilled grade four teaching position.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Gary. I took it out of the stand, that helps. Okay, thank you so much. So this is regular instruction. It's everything that happens in the classroom. So it covers the classroom teachers, and then it also covers ed techs that support the regular ed instruction, which is our pre-K, our gifted and talented, our English language learners. It's also all the supplies for the classrooms, and there are no new positions here. We have been, we reduced three elementary teacher positions and one ed tech position in the original proposed budget. And since that, we, since the August referendum, there's been additional reduction of a science teacher that was unfilled position, and a grade four teacher position that was unfilled. The impact of the reductions, which is the next slide, thank you. So since May 17th, there was a $61,565,000 reduction in this cost center. And then there was, since June 27th, recommended, recommended budget, $186,000 reduction. So you can see in this cost center, there, it is $94,633.39 less than last year's cost center, or down 1.27%.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed, that motion carries. Article Two, to see what sum RSU will be authorized to expend for special education, the school board recommends $4,532,321.74. Motion, please. It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed, that motion carries. Article Three, to see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for career and technical education, the school board recommends $0.00. Motion, please.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes, so our funding for students to attend Lewiston Regional Technical Center goes to the Lewiston School Department. Therefore, we don't receive it in our formula as well.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed, that motion carries. Article Four, to see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for other instruction, the school board recommends $519,671.66. Motion, please.
I move for the recommended amount.
It's been moved by Mr. English. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed, that motion carries. Article Five, to see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for student and staff support, the school board recommends $2,497,730.37. Motion, please.
Go move for the recommended amount.
It's been moved. It's been moved. Is there a second? It has been seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, so for this, this is student staff support. This includes the salary and benefits for approximately five guidance counselors, and six, three social workers, four librarians, five, four nurses, an LPN, director of technology, our network specialists, two technicians, and a reduction, we reduced one tech assistant. Purchased professional services are in this, so stuff that has to do with technology is in this, supplies and equipment, software and hardware, and improvement instruction, so anything to do with our curriculum. And since the second referendum, there's been a reduction of a halftime administrative assistant position, $15,000 from the tuition reimbursement line. So in here is if staff take coursework, they put in, ask approval, and then they take a course and they're reimbursed for that. And then there was a reduction of workdays for the IT staff.
Does that answer your question? Yes. So the question is if there was a reduction to be made, would it, would it come from this article?
They could move to amend it in the article.
Right, just as a guidance, as moderator, I'll guide you. If you're looking for a different amount, you could make an amendment. And then it would have to be seconded in order for it to be considered. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed, that motion carries. Article Six, to see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for system administration, the school board recommends $855,186.77. Motion, please.
Move for the recommended amount.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Hi, Nicole Russell from Sabates. I have a question about the new posting for a trip route coordinator, and if that falls into this article, and if so, what is the salary for that? And why wasn't that brought up in our budget discussions in our recent weeks?
So the trip coordinator was held by a bus driver. So when that, so there was a shift there that the person in that role is a bus driver, and so that opened the trip coordinator position. So it, it was held by a driver, was doing both driving and the trip coordinator. It is not in this cost center, it's in the transportation cost center.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion?
Rocky from, Rocky, Rocky from Sabates. If there's a director of transportations, why do we need a trip coordinator, is my question?
We do not have a director of transportation. We have a director of operations that oversees the facilities and transportation. So the trip coordinator is not, is a 220-day position, and supports what, the position is supporting the drivers and the routes, and supporting the director of facilities and network.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Any further questions?
Sorry, Nicole Russell, Sabates, and this is probably out of order now because the last slide for the last warrant said director of transportation.
It said director of technology.
Did I read it wrong?
I can go back.
Okay, maybe I saw it wrong.
That's all right. Yeah, go back. So yeah, it's a director of technology.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions on Article Six, which is for system administration?
Sorry, Nicole Russell from Sabates. I still don't feel that we've addressed the community's request to limit the administrative costs, administration costs with RSU Four. I can't throw out a number to be amended. I don't know what that would look like. I know that I was reviewing RSU Four's Facebook, and there were some community members who said that they weren't going to vote for anything unless administration was cut. I still don't understand why we need a business manager, an accounts payable, a payroll specialist, two admins. I think there's more to the list. I still don't understand what all the different roles are, and how they support the students and community of RSU Four with the overhead that they have, and with the approval for that amount of money.
Is that a question or just a general statement?
Sorry, I don't know, I mean, can you give us some more information about all of the different roles and what they do? I don't think I've even gotten that in the past couple of meetings that I've attended. And I just don't understand where the $842,000 comes in and how that supports our students. Can you give us some roles and responsibilities for all of those and how they differ? I mean, why we would need a payroll specialist, and a payroll, accounts payable, right there, payroll benefits clerk, and accounts payable receivables clerk?
Do you want to answer? Test, test, there we go. So the business department or the business, business office at Central Office, those three roles have very unique roles and responsibilities. So accounts payable, that specialist deals with all of the bills that come into the office. So we have recurring bills for, you know, maintenance to the buildings, our transportation bills, we have supplies that are ordered. So that person receives those bills from the appropriate directors, principals, or administrative assistants, codes them, and, or processes them with the codes that we're responsible for reporting out to the state. So all of these cost centers that we review every time we come to a budget meeting, all of those have unique codes that the state says that we have to use to report out on those expenses, to make sure that we are, you know, upholding our fiduciary obligation to spend what the taxpayers give us the, the right to spend. And so that accounts payable person processes all of those, processes payments, submits checks to our various vendors. That's a 220-day position. And then our payroll specialist is uniquely responsible for making sure that every staff person in the district gets paid, so we have bi-weekly pay. So she is busy with, you know, benefits for all of our salary employees, she's busy processing that payroll, and that's a full-time position. My position oversees those two positions, but I also do various other things in the district. I process all of our federal funds that we have for reimbursement. When we go out to bid for different projects, that's my responsibility, is to put out the request for proposals, to assist the superintendent with anything that has to do with the budget billing, et cetera. So those are all, you know, pretty important roles. I feel like all, all of the staff in my department are, are busy every day that they're in working.
Does that answer your question?
It does, but it raises more. I thought the assistant superintendent was responsible for doing the grants and things like that.
I handle the billing aspect of it. So when we make the purchases, when we pay for things through the grant, I handle the processing and the reimbursement and the billing. So the writing of the grant, so for example, our special ed grant that we have, the special ed director is in charge of writing that grant, applying for that, overseeing the people in that grant. The assistant superintendent does the title grants, and then as far as the billing goes, the financial upkeep of those books, if you will, that, that falls to me. Does that clarify?
It does, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any further questions or discussion?
I have another question, but I don't want to, just, okay. The other question I had has to do with the $2,000 reduction for the courier, the mail services. So in our last meeting, or meetings, in discussing the budget, we talked about how that, that was reduced to a Monday, Wednesday, Friday role, and I guess there, it's a third-party outside vendor. And then there was some discussion about how there, there needs to be travel to bring stuff to the post office. So I was a little confused by that. And I also don't understand why we can't use the buses going to each of the buildings to do inter-office mail, or what exactly the, the courier is needed for, and what that amount is now that we've reduced it by that $2,000.
To get you an exact number of what it is now that we've reduced it, I have to just do a little bit of research because we reduced it partway through the year, so it had been five days a week until the board approved that reduction. I think the 2,000 that you're referring to is the travel line, though.
Sorry, thank you. I don't remember the number then.
Sure, yep. So it was, it was 2,000 for the Central Office travel line, so that came up at a different budget meeting. And so we went back, and I reviewed that line, looking at our actuals and some changes to, to personnel and different contracts that had travel and those that didn't, was able to reduce that by the 2,000 by looking at our actuals and what we project for this year.
So then what did we save with the courier, since I, I remember the wrong number? Do you have that number?
I think it was 3,000 that we reduced to bring it down to Monday, Wednesday, Friday from that point in the year on. And I, I understand your, your question about the buses, but like a lot of the buses aren't making that route on a daily basis, like from one school back to Central Office. And, and really, it's, it's been an adjustment, we've been able to manage it so far, but just going down to three days a week, we have important paperwork that goes from the offices within the buildings to the Central Office for things like processing, you know, any report of injury, if someone's hurt at work, or if a student's hurt, or if we have employee personnel paperwork that needs to go back and forth, that needs to be processed in a timely way, so we're managing. But it's been, it's been tough just going down to three days a week.
The courier is in transportation cost center, too. Just so, you'll see that later. It's not in system administration.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So is there any other administrative cost that can be considered? I'm just speaking for, for the community right now. Like I said, I don't have a number. You know, we've talked about a few things at, at the, the budget meetings, but nothing's really come up under administration, but I don't know who's watching tonight, so I just want to make sure that if they're watching, that they get the answers, or they hear, that hear what your response is. So if there are any other, you know, things that we've considered in the administrative, administrative sector of our RSU Four. And I'm also not sure about why we're paying for postage and a courier, if that's not included. That just seems like we might be able to, you know, make some efficiencies there, just what are the options that the school board has considered for administrative cuts?
Anybody want to respond to that?
I can, I can tell you the difference between, the courier does inter-office mail, so it's from school to school, school to Central Office, Central Office out. The postage is everything that has to be mailed out, like all these, the budget information that got mailed out, that would be postage.
Any further questions?
Sorry, I, maybe I missed it, but did you have a new number for the courier?
For the courier?
No, I, I said it would take me some time to put that together.
Yeah, I mean, I just, it's 2023, I, I deal with contracts and stuff all day long, and I, I just, I haven't used a mail or courier in seven years at least.
No, we, we hire someone to do it.
No, I understand.
Oh, okay, it's not a contracted service.
Can't send the documents electronically?
There's things after.
Yeah, so, 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 some of this paperwork that we send is sensitive. They can't go electronically because we have to make sure it gets to the person that it goes to. I'm not saying all our stuff like that is, is like that, but a lot of the inter-office mail has to go back and forth daily, and we've cut it down to three days a week. Can we discuss next year cutting it more? We could, but we're going to have, you know, you're not going to get more by taking, you're not going to get more by taking away more, that's for sure. And over the years, we've found out that by hiring a courier out, it was cheaper than having somebody in our own building do it, like to send a custodian over. That's what we used to do years ago. We'd send a custodian over to pick up the mail, get the mail, back and forth, you know, collect the mail. So it's a matter of trying to save what we can, when we can, and that's what, that's what we're trying to do.
No, I just, I'd like to see some more creativity with that, because you can send secure documents electronically. But, you know, we have administrators, like facility administrators, going to the buildings throughout the day, and just get a little bit more creative with it, save some money.
All right, I think we have a question.
Carolyn Sabates. I was trying to go over that, it was like a 72-page, I guess.
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
Okay, better, yeah. Sorry, not used to this. When I was looking over that 70-some-odd page, I think it was the whole budget all by category, and I was trying to figure out the difference when Andy Carlton was here with the super's office, Central Office, whatever. The budget there was, I wrote it down because I forget everything. Let me see, 280,000. And $280,000, and now it's 466 in just a couple of years. What did we add that's costing a couple hundred thousand dollars more? And I know COVID, we had all kinds of money from the government, you know, other people's money, OPM. We don't have that anymore, and we can't afford to keep all that. So what was added to make the $200,000 difference there? Because I looked, and I couldn't see, I mean, the numbers are all, principal half here, half there, that, I don't understand how you split from one to the other, and then you shift this and that, it doesn't, it's not clear in black and white, now you get to shift numbers. But I don't see where the 200,000 was taken from somewhere else and then put in there. There's no, it doesn't offset. Where's the $200,000 difference in just a couple of years' time?
All right, I'm going to defer your question because I think it's the next article that you're questioning, not this one.
Well, it's out of this one, though. The 200,000 budget is up, it's, I mean, it's, when 200,000 on the supers, this, this article is what's 200, $200,000 more. I've got it right here, actually.
Yeah, so I can, I can, I mean, the former superintendent isn't here, so I can't, you know, I'm going to give you, because I looked as well, and I was looking that in 2020, this cost center was $940,000 in 2020, this cost center.
Which one?
This cost center.
Which is this, you?
Article Six, yeah, Article Six was as high as 900,000. And then I kind of went, went, okay, so then, you're right, it went down to like 649,000. So I was trying to guess, okay, it went from 900,000, then it went back down, you're right, and then it went back up in, for the 2022 budget, okay? So in, in thinking through that, we moved the curriculum director position, so, which used to be in cost center five, and that got moved to this cost center when the position became the assistant superintendent.
So it dropped 200,000?
You mean up or down?
The cost center five dropped by 200 to go into cost center six, to up it to 200,000.
So I'm just trying to tell you what I think.
I can show you the page.
No, I, I, I'm telling, I'm, I'm just trying to answer the question.
No, no, I get it, I'm not just.
Please let her answer, okay?
Okay.
Right, so I looked at what this cost center was over the last five years. So I saw it going up and down as well. And so the, because the former superintendent is not here, I would say it was when the curriculum director position moved into Central Office, and it was also prepped for a new superintendent coming in. So that would account for some of it, not all of it. I haven't dissected it enough, but I saw it up, and it was up, and then it was down, and now it's in, at 800. So I saw what you saw.
Okay, and what new positions were added from 2020, was it 2020, up till now? What new positions were added to change the amount so much? Any new positions besides moving that person?
Well, the, the big move, you mean, why did it go from 900,000 to 600,000? I'm not sure, I didn't look at that. And then going from 600 to 800,000, I said it was a shift in that position coming into system administration.
Okay, well, this, and that position you were talking about was what that was shifted?
Curriculum director.
Okay, so did that curriculum director area, did that go down since we moved it here?
The cost center five, yes. I didn't do, yes, it went down. I don't think it was exactly the same amount, so I was looking that. So I was looking that as at that as well.
Okay, and I don't know if it's part of this or not, but when we negotiate, you guys negotiate contracts, you guys negotiate a year or two ahead. How does that how do you negotiate? So I was trying to figure that out, because if you're negotiating a contract for, let's say admins, whichever, when you're negotiating, we don't even know what the budget is yet? How can you negotiate a year or two ahead when you don't know what money you're gonna have?
I think I'm gonna somebody on negotiating. Okay.
Yeah, so all contracts, I think, are normally for a certain number of years. They're not negotiated every year, thankfully. It is a it is a long process to negotiate a contract. So we negotiate contracts on three-year periods. We can't have, I believe statute says that our contracts cannot be greater than three years. All right? And so that's what we do. We have four different collective bargaining agreements that I can think of, I believe at least three, maybe four. So we, when we go into negotiations, we follow the guidance of the board, we work back and forth with the bargaining unit. We just finished with the teachers at the last meeting. We approved that bargaining contract, which is for this year and the next two years. And they certainly have salary increases in each of those years, as does every contract for people has an increase. We that's the contract we have with them. We don't know what's gonna be approved by the budget. We never have. This has been this way for long before I ever got in the school system on the board. That's how the contracts work. So what happens is next year, when we build a budget, we will take a list of all the staff that we have, and we will project, knowing exactly what their new cost is going to be in the new year, and we put that amount in the budget. If we don't get the amount that we need to support that, then that means we have to lay off staff. So it could be teachers, custodians, secretaries, food service, whatever, wherever you don't give us the money to pay that, that means we have less staff. We have less staff, we lay off teachers, we lose programs. So we have less class offerings, and we have larger class sizes. So it's a it's a game that the board has to go and play to project what's a reasonable increase for our staff so that they will stay with us and that we can hire people at a rate that is somewhat competitive in the next three-year period. And that's what we bargain for, that's what we believe we settle for. Both sides work on it, and it takes a while to get to a number. And then that's the number that we have to work with for three years. And we hope that we didn't give pay raises that are so large that the community can't support it, but that it's large enough so that we can retain our highly qualified staff, and that when we have openings, that it's sufficient to attract somebody to come here so that they don't go every place else because we're so low-paying. And that has been the process, an issue for the last couple of bargaining arrangements. The teachers, four years ago, got a really significant increase to get them up in line. The administrators got a significant one to get up in line. So they're just in line with what's the average in this area for people in the same positions. We're not a high-paying district, but we're not no longer at the bottom, and we were kind of for the teachers until we brought that up. This new contract increased, I believe, well, it's the contracts are public records once they're out, and I think it's a roughly 3% increase this year, or 3.5% increase for the teachers this year. All right? And in addition to that, they also get steps. So somebody is not getting just 3%. They're getting their step increase, and then they're getting a 3% on the base. So we're we're trying to stay competitive, but that's how it works. You can't bargain a contract after you get a budget. Can't get a budget until June at the earliest, right? And you gotta have teachers signed up for next year. And if they don't know what they're gonna get paid, there's a lot of school districts. Lewiston's got 153 openings. They could take our complete staff of teachers if we don't know what they're if they don't know what they're gonna get paid.
Thank you. I can't remember any more questions.
All right. Again, we're on system administration. Any further questions on system administration?
I have a question. Just wondering if professional membership for superintendent and assistant superintendent are paid out of this cost center? Is that separate, or is that part of your benefit package? Is that part of your 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 contract?
That that I can attend professional development?
No, your like, membership, professional membership.
Right, yes. Would be in this cost center.
Would be in that cost center. Because I know as a teacher, nobody paid for my professional membership. I had to pay it myself. So I'm just wondering if that's something that could save our town a little bit of money. I know all teachers pay their own.
Well, we have teachers that we pay professional development for. It's in.
I'm not talking about professional development. I mean, in my my.
You mean, oh, I see what you're saying, like being part of ASCD, you know, something like that.
No, when I when I renew my teacher certification, that certification.
I pay for mine.
You pay for your own?
Yes, you do not pay my certification.
That's what I was wondering.
Oh, yes, I pay for my own certification, yes.
So the next cost center had professional memberships. What is that?
Are you talking about system administration or school administration?
Well, there's nothing there's there's nothing under system administration. There's only it's under school administration. What is what is that?
That is their professional memberships, not their certification, but their memberships to main principals association.
Okay, but because nobody paid my memberships to anything.
Any further questions or discussion on system administration?
Rocky from Sabates. This is like, this article is for the superintendent's salary, the assistant superintendent's salary, correct? That is this, okay. Now, under this article, and trying to cut down on costs for administration, I'm hearing, I'm wondering, one question, one is, I know that in the negotiation contract for the superintendent's office, she's allowed up to a 3% raise, I believe it is, by year, is what you guys had said at the last meeting. Who is involved in reaching the decision whether or not you get the full 3% for that raise? And second part to that question was, I just lost it, so.
Is there somebody that can answer that question? Rob?
Yeah, the superintendent's salary is a negotiated salary, just like it is for teachers, support staff, and everything else. So that salary comes to the board, and the board by majority votes to accept that amount.
Okay, that that didn't quite answer my question, though. What I was asking was, she's allowed up to a 3% raise on her salary. Who is involved in determining whether or not she has earned the maximum of 3% or if, say, she gets 0.7%? Who is involved in making those decisions?
It's built into the yearly con the three-year contract, just like every other.
So she doesn't have an assessment, like?
She does.
Everybody, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, no, no, every year, every year, the board assesses the superintendent, and we go over any points with the superintendent that we might want her to address, or things that she need might need, or the person might need to work on, or stuff like that. But every year, the board assesses the superintendent.
Okay, so the board does her review?
Yes.
Okay.
Doesn't impact that number.
No.
I'm sorry?
It it does not impact that number.
The whether or not she gets the 3%?
Right, because that's a negotiated.
Hands down, she gets 3% every year regardless of her review?
Yeah, that's a negotiated part of the negotiated contract.
All right. And then also, I've heard it to me sounds like a lot of outsourcing as far as, but can I get a description of exactly what the superintendent's role is? Because I hear that the assistant superintendent does quite a bit, and so does the business manager, and a lot of other people in the team. And I'm I'm just wondering, because we're paying a lot of money for a superintendent, if you're just gonna outsource.
In the FAQ that's online, the job description is there for the superintendent. So.
Okay.
I mean, it's it's three pages long.
The superintendent is right here.
Right, no, I I was just trying so you could get more specifics on it. But my job is to oversee all the programming, making sure that we're in compliance with the large amount of laws and policies, communications, working with the board, working with getting the the budget information together. Right now, covering when someone like a director's out, trying to step in and help with that. But it's just a daily thing of making sure that we are looking at our school goals, evaluating the principals, looking at school data, looking at how we can improve, having meetings to, you know, so it's it's just a potpourri of job responsibilities.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on system administration? There's a motion to move the previous question, which will end discussion. That does require a two-thirds majority and is non-debatable. All those in favor of ending discussion and moving to the vote, please raise your paddles. Those opposed? That motion carries. Recapping Article Six, the motion on the floor, since it's been a few minutes, was All those in favor, please raise your paddle. Those opposed? That motion carries. Article Seven, to see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for school administration. School board recommends $1,050,262.49. Motion, please.
So move for the recommended amount?
Second.
It's been moved for the recommended amount and seconded. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed? That motion carries. Article Eight, to see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for transportation and buses. School board recommends $1,098,950.06. Motion, please.
So move for the recommended amount?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Questions or discussion?
Nicole Russell Sabates. I saw that there was a posting for three bus drivers. Is that already included in the total here of 12 bus driver positions?
Yes.
Okay, and thank you. And what is a part-time courier driver? Is that that's the male? Okay, thank you. And where is the trip route coordinator?
That's that's not a new position. So where we had one head bus driver, that was the person serving in that role.
So this one head driver that's listed under this article, were they playing two roles?
Yes.
Okay, but why wasn't why isn't it written out that there's two different positions?
Well, it it's a it was referred to as head bus driver in their in their contract, their professional contract support. It's called trip coordinator. So that we have that position open, and so that's the position that was posted.
So is the head driver on this slide the same position as the trip route coordinator, and we no longer have a head driver? I'm lost.
Correct, that's would be correct. You're absolutely correct.
So we don't have a head driver anymore?
So I could have updated this.
Okay.
So I apologize for that. But the person that was the trip coordinator.
Mm-hmm.
Ended up because we were couldn't fill our bus driver positions, and the trip coordinator had their license. So they ended up getting being on the road more than they were able to do the trip coordinator. So they're trying to juggle both positions. So the change is that we now have the driver position, and then we have the trip coordinator position. So no, we do not have a head bus driver and a trip coordinator.
Okay, so that trip coordinator is replacing.
Correct.
The head driver, so we won't have a head driver.
Correct.
Is the director of operations going to take over those duties as a head bus driver?
No, they're the head bus driver was the trip coordinator driving. So the trip coordinator is now the so we have the number of drivers and a trip coordinator, and the person was serving in both roles. The person is no longer serving in both roles, so we have hired the trip coordinator, and we have a driver.
So we do have a head driver?
No.
Okay.
It's a regular driver.
Right. The head bus driver. The head bus driver doesn't exist anymore.
Position, right.
Can I jump in?
Go ahead, Kristi.
Just to be a different voice. So that the head bus driver was a was with somebody with their bus driver's license, and they also did trip coordination.
Yep.
Okay? We did not have enough bus driving bus driving positions. So the head bus driver said, okay, I'm gonna drive bus. I can't do both. So the trip coordinator position was created that you don't have to have a bus driver license to be able to do that. So we no longer in the district have a head bus driver. We have bus drivers and a trip coordinator. But it's not an it when the head bus driver position was a position, they did bus driving, and they were supposed to be kind of in charge of all the other bus drivers. That no longer exists.
So Ms. Russell's question is, who's taking over the head bus driver duties?
The trip coordinator is taking that portion of the job. And that person will be a bus driver only.
Numbers, it sounds like to me we have, we would have had 13 capable bus drivers, and one of the 13 would be a trip coordinator. Now we have 12 capable bus drivers, with one person being a trip coordinator who is not a capable bus driver out of the 13 people.
So then the bus driver who was a head driver is now just a regular bus driver, and the only thing that made that person a head was the fact that he also did the responsibilities of the trip route coordinator?
Yes, so the pay of the trip coordinator was the pay, the same pay as the head bus driver. The head bus driver is making the pay of a bus driver.
So there's no impact.
So there's no impact.
No impact.
Okay. I'm gonna have to digest that. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any further questions on transportation? Yes?
So just a question, if everybody in the transportation department has their bus driver license?
All the bus drivers have their bus license.
Any other questions or discussion on transportation? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed? Article Nine, to see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for facilities maintenance. The school board recommends $3,397,710.09. Motion, please.
Move for the recommended amount?
It's been moved. Is there a second? It has been seconded. Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed? That motion carries. Article Ten, to see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for debt service and other commitments. The school board recommends $453,429.77. Motion, please. Motion please.
Moved for the recommended amount?
It has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It has been seconded. Questions or discussion?
The last payment is two thousand twenty-eight.
Alright, any other questions or discussion?
Is this the payment that only Sabates residents pay, or are all three municipalities paying?
It's part of, in the ED two seventy-nine formula, it's, um, put towards Sabates. So you'll see Sabates' amount is higher, and that's part of the reason.
Any further questions or discussion?
Nicole Russell Sabates. Um, at the last public vote, I had asked what the interest rate was, have we figured that out yet? For this? Okay, thank you, so we don't have that yet? Yeah, cause I'm just curious if it's fixed rate, and if, now it's, I don't remember what we said at the last public vote, but I thought we were close to the end. Two thousand twenty-eight seems like not close. Um, so can we get the, the maturity date for that as well?
We'll, we'll add it to the
She's nodding yes, she's nodding yes, thank you.
Nicole, we'll put it out in the FAQ.
Perfect.
We'll put it in the FAQ.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. I think that question has been asked and answered. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed? That motion carries. Article Eleven, to see what sum the RSU will be authorized to expend for all other expenditures. School Board recommends zero dollars. Motion please.
So moved, recommended amount?
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries. Article Twelve, to see what sum the RSU will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, and to see what sum the RSU will raise and assess as each municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, in accordance with the main revised statutes Title Twenty A, Section One Five Six Eight Eight. Total appropriated by municipality. Town of Litchfield, five million, five hundred thirty thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars, forty-seven cents. And the total to be raised by the Town of Litchfield by RSU assessment is two million, seven hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars, thirty-three cents. Town of Sabates, eight million, six hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred five dollars, eighty-four cents. And RSU assessment for the Town of Sabates would be two million, three hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred eighty-eight, eighty-three. Two million, three hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred eighty-eight and eighty-three cents. We'll finish reading the article, and then we'll discuss after that. Town of Wales, two million, eight hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars, eighty-two cents. And the RSU assessment for the Town of Wales would be nine hundred twelve thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars, seventeen cents. The total is seventeen million, fifty thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Total local, RSU assessment total is six million, twelve thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Motion please.
So moved?
As, as, as read?
Yeah, we'll do as read, and then we'll go to see why it's not, it's printed.
There's a motion, as read, that was posted in your municipal town office. Is there a second? It has been seconded. I think somebody said there was a discrepancy in the numbers.
Yes.
So let's see what
Can you hear me? Okay. Um, I think it was read incorrectly.
I think they said this, there was Sabates was off?
Yeah. On the slide, I think it should have written, uh, read for Sabates required local, two, three, four, five, two, eight, eight, eighty-three.
Alright.
Which is, I believe you read it correctly from the warrant.
Which is what I read, which was what was, which was what was posted in the municipal offices. So we will confer that the slide is incorrect. Any questions or discussion? Yes.
Hi, Lana Hall from Wales, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm not sure if this is the right time to say this or not, but I'm just gonna say it. So we, there's a lot of people here, I can see that about five people who are trying to point something out to you guys about why this have been failing at the post, at, at the ball, at the ballot, right? And then there's about twenty people who wants to pass this, which is great. However, I don't think we're listening to what those five people are trying to say. The cost of the administration cost is too high when we have people who actually the, want to have those costs reduced, be that salaries, uh, be that positions, be that, or what you call them, um, uh, raises. But then you're also cutting the programs for kids, cutting the positions that our teachers could actually use. And that's why people do not pass this at the ballot. So yes, we're gonna sit here, let the twenty people who hear who pass this, pass it, but then they're gonna go to the ballot, it's not gonna pass again, because you're not listening. Thank you.
Alright. Any further questions, comments? Yes, sir. You want the total number by town again, or total for the bottom line? The sum of all three municipalities, the total is seventeen million, fifty thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars, thirteen cents. And the amount to be raised by the municipalities is six million, twelve thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed? That motion carries. Article Thirteen. Article Thirteen will be a written ballot, so we'll have time. To see what sum the RSU will raise and appropriate in additional local funds, recommend three million, nine hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-three cents, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by the recommended amount of three million, nine hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars, forty-three cents, as required to fund the budget recommended by the School Board. The School Board recommends three million, nine hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-three cents, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by three million, nine hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars, forty-three cents, due to inequities in the EPS funding formula, including but not limited to the regional labor market adjustment factor, student-teacher ratios, extra and co-curricular programs, and administrative costs. Motion please.
So moved for the recommended amount?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for the recommended amount. Questions or discussion? One more time, questions or discussion? Seeing none, I guess I will call for the vote. This, again, will be a written ballot, it is a yes or no question. The color of the ballot we'll be voting with is?
Pumpkin.
Pumpkin. How appropriate. Alright, so if you would please make your way to the ballot box, again, this is a yes or no question.
Rob, do you need assistance? I can handle the ballot, first, do you need a ballot?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta be legit. Randy's gonna get one. Thank you, I do. Can you give me that pen right there, and I'll let you take it right now? Oh, perfect, thank you. Thank you. You can have your pen back, too, you almost left it. Thank you. Uh, she already took it back. Patty took it back. Thank you.
Has everybody voted who wishes? Is there anybody who needs assistance with voting? We can help you, Judy. Alright. Alright. Last announcement, anybody else need assistance with voting? Seeing none, I will declare the ballot box closed, and they will begin counting. Alright, can I have your attention, please? We have a total of forty-six potential voters present. We have twenty-six yes, nineteen no, with a total of forty-five ballots cast. The article passes. Article Fourteen, to see what sum the RSU will authorize the School Board to expend for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four, from the RSU's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, local funds for non-state funded school construction debt services, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statutes Title Twenty A, Section One Five Six Nine Zero, unexpended balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. The School Board recommends twenty-one million, seven hundred sixty thousand, six dollars and fifty-six cents. Motion please.
So moved for the recommended amount?
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your paddles. Those opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Uh, so this concludes this portion of the budget process. Uh, I will remind people, uh, this is step one. Step two will be to go to the municipal offices. Uh, on October third, the polls are open from eight to eight in Sabates and Litchfield. Wales being the overachievers, they're open from seven AM to eight PM. Um, and absentee ballots will be available tomorrow in your municipal offices. With no further business to come before this budget meeting, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.